Thank you. Lenny was supposed to zoom in, but he hasn't made it yet. So I think we'll just start. And if he comes in, then he can take over as he gets here. In the meantime, we'll get this started. Grace, do you want to say the state, read the statement, please?
Welcome to the public meeting of September 17th, 2025 of the Township of Washington Planning Board. Adequate notice of the meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by the Board Secretary to at least two newspapers on January 3rd, 2025. This meeting has been posted on the Township Bulletin Board, Electronic Message Board, WCTV, and on the Township Board of Assembly.
Let me do this salute to the flag, please.
Let's allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America, to the Republic. Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do the roll, roll, brace, please.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Polito.
Here.
Mr. Tool.
Here.
Mr. Toro.
Here.
Mr. Wojnarowski.
Here.
Councilman Almond is absent. Mayor Calamari.
Yeah.
Chairman Sabino is absent. But the record reflects also in attendance are attorney Lou Lamatina, engineer Paul Azalina, and board secretary Hreisky.
Okay, we also have a, just a note that the Optum online channel has now changed to Channel 77. If anybody needs to look at it, that's where it'll be. Horizon is still on Channel 24. Okay, Grace, we'll do the public portion.
Okay. To participate in the general public portion of the meeting, please click the link below to join the webinar. You'll be asked to state your name for the record, and we ask that only one person speak at a time. This public comment portion is only for non-agenda, I notes. Time is set aside later in the meeting to address questions or comments about current agenda. If you are participating by phone, press star line to raise your hand and star six to unmute. At the end of the general public portion, no further general questions or comments will be accepted.
Good. So we need a motion to open the public portion.
Make the motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, any, nobody here for any questions? Anybody online? Or any comments?
No. No one's.
Okay, so there's no, no public questions or comments. So I guess we make a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Motion. Okay. New business, we're going to have the discussion of the ordinance 20, 25-20, and resolution 25-307 regarding demolition and tree preservation. So I guess we'll pull that out. My understanding is that this was gone through town already, and it's sent over to us for comments. So I guess anyone having any comments on this as we go forward? On the.
Mark.
Grace is Mark on?
He is on.
Okay.
Yes.
So if anyone has any questions.
Mark was instrumental in preparing these ordinances.
Was Paul involved, Paul?
I was not. I had a brief conversation with Mr. DeCarlo, the Sayad. Mentioned a few things that I thought perhaps need to be fleshed out a little bit further. The township, as I read the ordinance, it seems like the township engineer would be making the initial call, a screening, and then it would go to either the planning board or the zoning board. And then beyond that, the, in section, so that's section two. Section one speaks of the same 50% that now we're talking about surface area of any visible facade, exterior wall, and/or architectural elements, which may or may not include the foundation that is prohibited, et cetera. So I thought the original problem with the ordinance was the definition of what 50% is. So now, now it seems like we are taking 50% of an area, which is typically, you know, two dimensional, as opposed to the way, when I was handling the screening, I did it based on a, like a linear foot percentage of the first floor framing. So this is different. It would just require somebody to make that call. So that's what I see as possible issues down the road.
Well, can you explain why it says which may or may not include the foundation? I know that was the issue we had with that one application, or the same, which may or may not include the foundation.
I think that night, and I'm surmising, because like I said, it's not part of the discussion, but in my earlier prior conversations with the construction official, demolition under the UCC basically says you're taking the foundation. So we've had applications such as Jernik recently. Fan, we started to see that where they, Jernik maintained the foundation, Fan was supposedly retaining the foundation, and then it ultimately got removed. So that's why I think the, the language relative to foundation is in there.
So I thought we wanted to find what, what the area is, because this seems to me to be very vague. I agree. And so you do a dog or a duck. Yeah. So it's about interpretation, the way we read it.
Yes. So as I read this, the interpretation would be made by, by the township engineer.
But based on what, I mean, I thought we wanted to be very specific. The one applicant said, well, I left the foundation, so I left more than 50%. I thought we wanted to address that.
Right.
In the ordinance. Now, I don't think this does. Yeah, I would agree with Lou. It's not addressing what the problem was. And it shouldn't say may or may not include the foundation. It's one of them.
Either one, or it does, or it does.
Right. I mean, the only way that comes into place is if there's no base. Maybe Mark can give us some, some insight as to why it's worded that way.
It's Mark on? Good evening, gentlemen. How are you? I, I really can't specifically say why it's worded that way. We worked on this with the township attorney, Siobhan Bailey, and our uniformed construction code official, which is Darius McCoy and Mr. Sabino. My, you know, my recommendation would be tonight is for you, gentlemen, to certainly you know, hammer out any additions or revisions or recommendations that you would like to see put back into the definition.
Yeah, we, our job is to say it's consistent with the master plan, which it is, but we can, of course, say we find it needs revision. Paul, you, you addressed it before, and I think if it includes the foundation, that's one thing. So they can take down the entire outside, leave the foundation. Is that the intent we want to give? Or we want to say it does not include the foundation, meaning you've got to leave a 50%, of the remainder of the structure? That, that's the question. I thought we wanted to clarify. So definitely is better.
I, I think, I think that's where the term surface area addresses that. If we, if we just, if we just look at the, the property as a two dimension, for, for example, and let's say, you know, two dimensional wise, 2,000 square feet. And if you want to demolish 1,000 square feet or more of that surface area, then I think that, that's where you would then need a different application. Does, does that help?
Are we saying surface area is above ground? Is that, is that the difference?
No.
With the foundations, no?
No, I think surface area, surface area.
But surface below ground, that.
I mean, you're sure?
Foundation is above ground, that's one thing, but if the foundation is below ground, I wouldn't call that surface area.
Well, I, I think you're taking the, the word surface too literally. It's not physically above or below. Surface is just a two dimensional area, length times width. It doesn't necessarily mean is it below ground or above ground? Take it just as a two dimensional building, for example. And if I'm removing 50% of that, regardless of whether it's above or below, whereas the existing ordinance doesn't mention anything about that. All it says is 50%. Doesn't, doesn't say specifically 50% of what.
We also had some conversation, and because we had so many people come in last, the end of last year, who retroactively wanted to get approval because they had already knocked everything down. And we discussed the possibility of some sort of penalty or whatever. I don't see anything addressed in this for that. And I don't know if this is the appropriate place for that or not, but.
Bill, I'm sorry, this is Lenny. My apologies. My apologies to the board for, for arriving late. I'm in Amsterdam and I have some connectivity problems.
No problem.
You're at the hotel, so. Thank you. So Bill, Mr. Sayad, sorry to pop you there, but Bill, can I give some additional context? And please stop me if it was already communicated to the board. But this ordinance was written by the, by the township attorney at the recommendation of myself, the mayor, but also from, based on comments that were made by the zoning board in a letter to the mayor and council. Some additional context, this ordinance, after being drafted by the, the township attorney, was reviewed by the town's construction official, Darius, who felt comfortable that the way the ordinance was written, that he would have the proper interpretation of demolition, so he can continue his role and responsibilities around the review of demolition applications that came across his desk. The, the draft ordinance was then presented to the mayor and council at the last mayor and council meeting for first reading. And at the recommendation of various members of the mayor and council, the ordinance was then provided to the planning board for their, their comments. So the, the purpose of this, this evening's conversation on the draft ordinance is to provide additional comments or interpretations or clarity to the mayor and council, should any exist from any of our board members. So I will stop, I will stop there. And again, Mr. Sayad, sorry for, for interjecting here, but I want to provide a little bit of context and background.
Yeah, no, not at all, Mr. Chairman. No, no worries.
Thank you.
I think we all appreciate the, the context.
The chairman, I would note that Councilman Almond voted no on the introduction, and unfortunately he's absent tonight. I'm wondering, you know, if we know why he voted no, that he have similar concerns. The board is very comfortable with the language, but I'll leave that to the board, of course.
Well, I think in my conversations with the township administrator, and then also if the mayor is at the, at the, at the meeting, my conversations with the town administrator was that Councilman Almond felt that additional review by the township, township engineer, including the zoning board engineer of the draft ordinance should be conducted, which did not occur.
Oh, Mr., Mr. Chairman, if I can just interrupt, it's Mark. The, the, just wanted to clarify that the township engineer Glenn Beckmeyer was, was certainly involved in reviewing this after we had our discussion with Siobhan and Darius. And I've spoken to him again as, as recent as today. It was then explained to, to Mr. Almond at the meeting that Ms. Bailey, the township attorney, recommended this course and direction, meaning it was appropriate for it to go to the governing body, the council, for first reading, and then recommendation to the planning board for review and for their comments, and then to be presented back to the council. I'm unsure as to why Mr. Almond was, for lack of a better term, upset that night. I think he wanted to see it come to the planning board first, but, you know, he's not here and to clarify, and I don't want to assume too much. We did, you know, Mr. Sabino, and he speaks of this, we had a humongous meeting back in early April that involved people from the zoning board, the planning board, all three engineers, our entire construction department, I believe Mayor Calamari was there as well, to kind of lay the foundation to where we are this evening. And that's where we established the route of the construction official being the one to really kind of decide what board it's appropriate to go to when there's going to be demolition. There was a concern, maybe a consensus of concern that there would be an engineer to accompany Mr. Darius's opinion or decision as to what board, if that's needed. And it was decided in that meeting that it was appropriate for it to be the township engineer. One reason to cut down on time for the residents slash applicants and to cut down on the cost. You know, those are habitual comments that we get from residences, the process takes so long, and sometimes it is what it is. It's, you know, no one dropping the ball, it's just the process. And the cost associated with setting up escrows for reviews from attorneys, and then, I'm sorry, for engineers. And if we don't have the township engineer, how do we know what engineer to send it to? So that's why that decision was kind of made. Lenny, before you joined this evening, there was some concern maybe in the the detail involved in the definition of demolition that we have in the ordinance. So I, you know, I don't know if you gentlemen want to recreate that for Mr. Sabino, you know, so he could adhere your comments, you know, if they're beneficial or not. But Mr. Sabino, you did miss that kind of in the first couple of minutes. Miss Gralzalina had, you know, some input on that as well. But again, sorry to be long-winded. I just wanted to bring everybody kind of to its inception. And it did start with those several homes. Everyone knows it. I don't need to call them out. In the beginning of the year, that kind of led us in this direction that, hey, we need more guidance. And there really wasn't any in the existing, the current existing demolition, because it just is really talking about the canopy. And for the preservation of the canopy, that's what's triggering demolition and then going to the planning board. So we're trying to revise it so it encompasses all those things.
Lenny, I think what he's referring to, and you weren't here when we were discussing this one section of it, but the demolition and raising dismantling destruction or demolition of 50% or more of an existing residence in a residential zone in the township, as calculated by surface area of any visible facade, exterior wall, and/or architectural element. And this is where we have a question, which may or may not include the foundation. We find that to be a little ambiguous. It, does it include the foundation or does it not? You know, that, that's, I don't know why, how that was written that way. That's, that's what our question was.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that additional background.
Looking at it, Paul, does that mean if the foundation? Looking at Paul, does that mean if the foundation is visible, you include it? As I read it again. So if part of the foundation, for example, is above grade and you see it, would that include?
Well, I, I'll say typically, a small portion of everybody's foundation is, is above grade.
Right.
Typically, you want to be two to three, two and a half feet above the ground surrounding your foundation. So. If you have an eight foot basement, you know, the balance is, is below grade, six to seven feet below grade or so. So. I, I think the, the may or may not include the foundation i- is relative to those applicants that elect. To remove the framing at, at the first floor level. You know, some people, and you're permitted, under, under the UCC, there's a, a specific type of, um. Permit that says new construction on existing foundation. I, I believe those applications. Are not required to provide, uh, homeowners warranties or perhaps only reversing it, that, that's really, uh, Darius's territory. So there is the possibility of, of that happening. So that's what I think that's alluding to. Um, but, you know, my primary concern was that. You know, it needs to, it needs to be screened. So based on what Mr. DeCarlo is saying now, that the township engineer will be doing the initial screening and consultation with. Uh, the construction official, but then, you know, I don't have any objection to the ordinance. It just needs to be followed through. That, that's all.
So Paul, can I ask a question? Would it make sense that we pay, put some kind of a reference in here about the UCC code? Because isn't that where we got the one problem with when?
I, I'll leave that up to, to Darius. I, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that that's why that's worded, uh, that way. Um, but a- as I say, there, there are occasions where you would leave the foundation in, but you would. You know, remove the, the first floor framing in its entirety perhaps. And then, so that just. I, I think, uh. As long as somebody's determining what the, what the 50% is and, and if we could perhaps tighten up, uh. The method of calculation as Mr. Toro suggested, um, you know, that would give applicants some, some direction.
And to me, the way this is written, if it's confusing us for sure, it's going to confuse our residents and that's what we're looking to prevent. Um, you know, if the intent is to include the above ground portion of the foundation, let's just say that instead of saying which may or may not. Let's just, to include the above ground portion of the foundation.
Uh, perhaps, perhaps, uh, we could also define surface area, which then that could maybe work its way in, into the, the foundation. Component, um. You know, which, which would require the development of, of some threshold number as Mr. Toro suggested. And then you could say, you know, um. Leaving the, the surface area, exposed surface area, however you wanted to define it. Uh, whether it's, uh, anything above original ground elevation up to and including the, the roof area. So that, that's another thing that would be, you know, somewhat confusing perhaps is if you, if you did. Uh, if you had a ranch home and you wanted to do a second floor at a level. You would remove the entire roof structure. Would that be 50%? So I think you need to define surface area. Is, is probably the, the key to, to this ordinance.
Yeah, it looks like they tried to, but it could be better said. It's like, like sort of architectural element.
Yeah.
To me, that needs a definition.
Too much crammed into that one sentence, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I, I definitely think we can, uh, take, take those two comments to find the surface area and then make it more definitive. Versus may or may not. Those are definitely two recommendations we can, uh, bring forth to the mayor and council.
And then for my clarification, what is an architectural element?
Yeah, that needs to be defined.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem relevant to this, to the percentages here. You're taking the exterior wall off. You're getting rid of the architectural element that's on that wall. I just. Is it a column or I, I just don't know what, what it's referring to?
Okay. Okay, we have two, three comments. Any additional comments from, uh, the board members?
Would it benefit if we put an example at the end of this, uh, paragraph, calculation example?
We could definitely make that recommendation and let the mayor and council decide. Paul, do you think, uh, providing an example of a calculation would, would, uh, provide additional clarity?
Yes, I do, but with the understanding that. And any example you give i- is not going to be all encompassing, so you would probably need to, you know, footnote that somehow, but, uh. Because there's always going to be some condition that you didn't anticipate, but I think if you, you gave a base calculation that. Somehow included a sketch that said, okay, we're measuring from this surface to, to that surface, you know, whatever it may be. Whether it includes the, the roof or not, that, that's up to the construction official and township here.
Okay.
I, I don't think it should include the, the roof. Um, I'm, I'm wondering also where it says to, to Mr. Lamontini's point in the beginning. Which may or may not include the foundation. Um, given that there are some homes that may not have a foundation. Maybe instead of the word the, it should be a foundation.
Okay.
Which may or may not include a foundation.
Remember the problem that we had here, one applicant said, well, we left the foundation, so we left 50%. But that's what we're trying to clarify. I, but again, I read this, I didn't get clarified at all.
Well, that's, that's where the idea of service area kind of addresses that, right? Because again, just going back to my example, the floor is 2,000 square feet, regardless of whether you have one floor or two. So how much of that floor or floors are you now, uh, demolishing? And forget the roof for a minute, right? If you're removing, if the entire house, a single floor, a single story house is 2,000 square feet. And you're removing a thousand square feet of it, that's automatically 50%. If the house is a two story house, 4,000 square feet, and you're removing 2,000 square feet. As the surface area is calculated, then that's 50%. Which may or may not include a foundation.
That, that's what hits us, like may or may not include.
Yeah.
Before you said that, we were good with that, but then again, when that one says, I left the foundation, but I knocked the rest of it down. That was our problem. I thought that's what really.
Yeah, I think the, the confusing part here is the, that, that they added surface area. That's what's confusing matters.
Yep. Okay. I've jotted down, uh, the five comments. Any additional comments that we can send forward to the mayor and council on this draft ordinance?
So just, just one question. So it's the volume of the building, not the surface area? Is that how you described it?
No.
No.
No, I think the way it's written here is they want, they're, they're looking, they're preferring to use surface area instead of volume. Just length times width, that's it.
Good.
And surface area would seem to include above, would seem to designate above ground, not foundation. That's what's confusing me.
But again, you're taking the word surface literally.
But it's in the ordinance, so you still have to take it literally. That's the problem. You put a word in there, you've got to take it literally. So let's, as Paul says, unless it's defined. The way I read it is, you know, surface area is above ground, does not include foundation. Like it should say, which does not include the foundation, meaning if you just leave the foundation, you're not meeting the ordinance. That's what we wanted to do.
What, what if you change that to square footage? The, the only issue there is I don't think the basement is included in square footage calculations. Is that correct?
A- as far as having a little space within, within a dwelling, yes, you don't include the, the basement.
You don't include the basement, okay. So if we, if, if we removed surface area and put in square footage instead. Does that help matters at all?
It might, I think it does.
I think it does, but I think it goes back to the original problem we had, Mr. Toro, with the, uh. The person that came to us and said they didn't touch the basement, so they're not touching 50%. So again, that's why I think they're, they're trying to cram that basement part in here to, to clarify that. And that's why I asked Paul what the UCC is on that. Because that's also causing the problem here. That person basically said. We didn't touch the basement, so we didn't touch 50%.
Yeah, that's right.
So that needs to be clarified.
Instead of surface area, can we do square footage including basement?
I think it is square footage. I don't know what you think, Paul.
And say square footage is not.
Not including the basement.
Right. Because it's not character, it's square footage, you know, that would make more sense of it.
But they want to include the basement, so would you want to have square footage including basement?
Not for this purpose, for tearing it down. It's the basement should not be included.
But the surface area, when we say surface area, it does include the basement as of now.
Right, but if we say square footage, not including the basement, then I think we've covered, we stay with.
Covers everything above it, above the basement.
All right.
Why, why can't we say square footage including basement?
Because then somebody's going to use the basement for the square footage of the calculation. He'll say, like this other guy did. I, I left 50% of it, but it was all basement that he left. He knocked everything else down. And we don't want that. We don't want to include the basement.
Can we separate the two?
Well, I think that's what we were saying. If you say square footage, not including the basement, then you're, you're talking just the square footage of the house.
The upper part of that.
The upper part.
Okay, and what happens if I wanted to demolish the basement as well?
He comes to us, comes to a board. That's, that's, I was just going to say that. You can do 50, up to 50% without coming to a board, but once you can do 51, 50%, you come to a board. So we can demolish the whole thing. Theoretically, the board agreed, but it gives us scrutiny of what's, what they're doing, unlike this other applicant.
Oh, okay.
I'm just leaving the basement. We can count on that, but we shouldn't be able to do that on the ground.
Yeah, good point.
Same, right.
Okay. I think that reads better. Square footage not including basement.
Go. Yeah. Okay, a- any further comments, uh, before my final comment on the draft ordinance?
Uh, Mr. Sabino, if you don't mind me just chiming in again more.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Excuse me for maybe just asking or suggesting, uh, how we go formally. Perhaps if we make these revisions, we can bring it back before the planning board to read one more time. Before we actually send it to the council.
Makes sense. Yeah.
When's the next council meeting though? I think they want to vote on it the next meeting.
I don't think, I mean, to answer your question, it's Monday night, so I don't think, you know, there's time anyway and it, it's been. You know, a long time coming and deserving. I don't see any reason waiting, you know, waiting till October 6th, I think is the next meeting, Mayor. To get it before the council, you know, there's no rush at this point.
Okay.
And I think it'd be better suited if, you know, the, the planning board can actually put eyes on the recommendations you just made. And, uh, then get it to the council.
When, when is our next meeting of the planning board?
From your point, was it any modification for the placement of the issue? I think it makes sense to be said. It's not until. Which makes sense to.
Grace, you know when the next planning board meeting is?
It'll be on my calendar, right?
October 1st.
They were getting for the sixth.
Unless you do have.
Yeah, October 1st.
Unless you, right, but you do have, but you listen.
That'll work.
Do that too.
I mean, the point is like we've been saying all night, it's to get it right.
Yes.
So I think, I think that suggestion that we see it again before it goes to the council makes a lot of sense.
Yes. I think what we're saying is would this board actually suggest revisions by way of like language? I mean, instead of a, a letter, Paul, would you want to take a crack at paragraph B, you know, with our health? And put it in how we think it should be? The mayor and council can simply say we don't agree with you, but. Are we saying we'll give you our version of what we think it should be?
What I would do with, I would talk to, uh, Glenn Beckmeyer and, and Darius to, to see what are they there. I would, you know, relay these thoughts to them and see what, what their revision would, would be.
That sounds like somebody would go get a consensus and then bring it up there on next meeting.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so Paul, you will take that, that action item? And speak to Beckmeyer and, uh, Darius and come back to this planning board with a revised.
Any, anybody else, and anybody else that you think should be in, in the conversation, Mr. Chairman?
Such as. I, I, again, uh, more, more, more chefs we have in the kitchen, the more complicated it becomes. And I think having Beckmeyer as our township attorney and, and Darius as our construction officials. Official, uh, their comments and thoughts, I think should be suffice at this point.
And Mr. Chairman and, uh, Mr. Azalina, I'll put together the email tomorrow morning to introduce this, uh, to everyone and, and get, get the ball rolling.
Yep. Will, will this meeting be on, on tape so that they could see the comments?
Yes.
Be helpful to, for the other people.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you everyone for, for your comments. Uh, that concludes, uh. That concludes the, uh, new business. Uh, there is no old business. Next agenda item, uh, the minutes. Has everyone reviewed the minutes from July 16th, 2025? Any comments?
And extreme, for example, that he should, uh, I think focus on.
Any comments on July 16th? None? Okay, do I have a motion to approve July 16th minutes?
Uh, I'll make that motion, so.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Grace, roll call.
Mr. Folito?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
Mr. Wojczeranski?
Yes.
Mayor Calamari?
Yes.
Chairman Sabino?
Yes. Okay, uh, before we adjourn, are there any, uh, board member with any comments, thoughts? Questions that, uh, they would like to bring up? My only comment is the, we're continuing with the master plan. As everyone is aware, this September is the 12th month. Uh, that since we've commenced with the master plan, uh, in, in working with Joe Burgess, a township planner. He did say it would take 12 to 14 months. Unfortunately, we were delayed somewhat with the fair housing, uh. Situation earlier this year and, uh, Joe's focus on, uh, reviewing the township, uh. Township, uh, fair housing requirement along with Joe act, uh, Mr. Burgess acting as the adjudicator for several townships in, uh, New Jersey. But nevertheless, we do have a subcommittee meeting on, uh, this coming Monday. Uh, with Mr. Burgess and other members of the master plan, uh, subcommittee. Uh, at which point we'll, we'll have a better understanding as to where we stand with the master plan. But also reiterating to Mr. Burgess that, uh, we'd like to get the plan completed sooner than later. Uh, because it is 12 months and I've gotten comments from several township, uh, residents that are asking why is it taking so long? So we will continue to push, uh, Mr. Burgess and Burgess Associates. Uh, to complete the, uh, the master, the master plan in accordance with the, uh, the project plan that was presented to. To us back in September of, uh, 2024. Those are my only comments. Any additional comments from my fellow board members or the mayor?
No, you covered what I wanted to about the, uh, master plan. Thank you.
No further comments, none? None? Okay, again, I apologize for uh calling in late, but I had connectivity problems here from Amsterdam. Don't know why, maybe has something to do with uh Amsterdam, but uh again, I apologize for being, for being late to my fellow board members. Who have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Have fun, Lenny. That was my fun, Lenny.
Thank you.